Okay, good afternoon. We will be calling the board meeting to order in a moment and SPS TV will begin broadcasting. All right, this is President Hershey. I am now calling the January 12th, 2022 regular board meeting to order at 4:16 PM. This meeting is being recorded. We would like to acknowledge that we are on the ancestral lands in traditional territories of the Puget Sound Coast Salish people. We will now move on to the roll call. Ms. Wilson Jones, the roll call, please.
Vice President Hampson.
Here. And there's a little bit of an echo on your end, Ellie, FYI.
Director Harris.
Present.
Director Rankin.
Here.
Director Rivera Smith.
Present.
Director Sargu.
Here.
Director Song Moritz.
Present.
And President Hershey.
Here. All right. This meeting is being held remotely consistent with the governor's proclamation on open public meetings. The public is being provided remote access today through SPS TV by broadcast and streaming on YouTube and by phone, consistent with the governor's proclamation on open public meetings. For those joining us by phone, please remain muted until we reach the testimony period and your name is called. I will now turn it over to Superintendent Jones for his comments.
Thank you, President Hershey. I want to talk briefly about our biggest challenge right now, and that's following up and following through with how we are mitigating our strategies to mitigate COVID. So I just want to say as superintendent, I recognize there's a lot of fear and anxiety in community. This is hard. It's extraordinarily inconvenient. It's impactful on staff, family, and students. You know, collectively, we're doing everything that we can to keep schools open and in person. We monitor daily. We meet multiple times every day to respond to the changing conditions. This week, for transparency and clarity purposes, we published our continuity of operation plan. This plan gives our thresholds and our guidelines for how we're making decisions around school closures and how to go remote. We have moved individual classrooms to remote. We've combined classes. And as you know, we've temporarily closed entire buildings, and some buildings have gone to remote. And this is all due to the number of staffing shortages due to reported illnesses. Now, according to the Institute for Health Metrics and Evaluation, it looks like we are peaking in terms of Omicron, and so we're looking forward to a some relief. But until we get that relief, I just want to be clear that our school teams have done heroic, heroic tasks in order to keep our buildings open and in person. And learning is still happening. That is our business. A hundred and one schools are open today for in-person learning. Receiving in-person learning from our great teachers is the best that we can do. That's what we do. In-person learning is the best we do. So our objective is to continue to learn in person safely. No guidance, no public health guidance is telling us to go remote. We continue to follow public health guidance. That is, that's who we are following. And in-person learning is also a state mandate, and this is again what our district is following. So instruction happens better in person, and we've learned this over the last 22 months. We've heard this from our families. They've urged us to continue in person. We've heard this over and over. So as we talk about student outcome-focused governance and we talk about goals and guardrails, we've had five guardrails, but I'm adding a sixth guardrail. And that guardrail is the superintendent will not allow disruption of learning. And the interim guardrail to that is the super, excuse me, disrupt the virus so that we don't disrupt learning. Disrupt the virus so we don't disrupt learning. So I just want to really emphasize that we are working extraordinarily hard. I want to thank everyone who has pushed up their sleeves and done Yoma's duty to help us to be safe. I appreciate that tremendously, and we are moving forward together. So I want to pivot to this is Board Appreciation Month. We are going to have a robust celebration on the 26th to recognize you, but in the interim, thank you. You're appreciated. On behalf of all the SPS staff, we appreciate you on Board Appreciation Month. Now, a bit of good news in all of this, I am committing on record today that our seniors will have a prompt. That concludes my remarks. Back to you, President Hershey.
If there are any seniors out there who are watching this, which maybe one or two, I would imagine that they are very excited in this moment. Okay, thank you Superintendent Jones for your comments. That was absolutely excellent. We have now reached the consent portion of today's agenda. May I have a motion for the consent agenda?
I move approval of the consent agenda. This is Director Hampson.
Second.
Okay. Approval of the consent agenda has been moved by Vice President Hampson and seconded by Member-at-Large Rivera Smith. Do directors have any items that they would like to remove from the consent agenda? Director Harris, I see your hand.
There you go. President Harris, I move that we take the minutes of the December 1st meeting off the consent agenda, please.
Okay.
Thank you.
Any other issues?
President Hershey?
Yes, Director Rivera Smith, please.
Item, I don't necessarily wish to take off the agenda, but I do want to give Assistant Superintendent Fred Podesta a chance to correct a clerical error in one of our bars.
Okay, that would be great. Would now be the, is Chief Narver on the phone or someone who can support with the timeline of that?
I am. It would be okay, but actually I believe the corrected bar was posted before the meeting, and I'm looking to Ms. Wilson Jones to confirm that that clerical error was corrected on a, it had to do with a dollar figure on change orders.
This is Ellie Wilson Jones, Director of Policy and Board Relations, just confirming that indeed that consent agenda number five was replaced at four today to correct the fiscal analysis section.
Okay, fantastic. So it doesn't appear that we need any additional action at this time. Am I correct?
That's correct. It doesn't, that correction doesn't affect them either the motion language or the text of the resolution that is adopted with a favorable vote on that. So it shouldn't affect the board's action on the consent agenda for that item.
Okay, wonderful. As always, good catch, Director Rivera Smith. Thank you for your diligence and thank you to staff for moving so quickly and getting that corrected.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you, Ms. Wilson.
So I would then move for approval of the consent agenda as amended.
That is correct, and we would need a second.
Second.
Okay, approval of the consent agenda as amended has been moved by Director Hampson and seconded by Director Rivera Smith. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
And aye.
Sargu, aye.
Aye.
Great. I believe that's everyone. All those opposed? Any abstentions? Okay, so. Let me see here. All right, so we will now be moving directly into discussion of the item removed from the consent agenda. I believe it goes to Director Harris. Am I correct in that?
Director Harris thinks you are, and I suspect that Director Rankin is going to follow up as well since we had some email conversation this afternoon.
Take it away.
Thank you. And I did not have time this afternoon, and my apologies for the late notice. When we discussed the budget forecast and had discussion, we had discussions about empty boxes on ways to mitigate our funding deficits. They included option schools, small schools, K through eights, and moving the bus tiers around. And it was a robust and I thought fairly elegant discussion. And Assistant Superintendent Rob Gannon and Assistant Superintendent of Finance Jolynn Bergy gave us good input and assured us that none of those empty boxes would be filled in in this budget cycle because the analysis and deep dive that we would need to approve said fairly major changes has not been done because of bandwidth and the extreme oppressive nature of all of our COVID mitigation and acting as a public health entity. We were assured that that would not happen. Further, we asked for the updated status of the Children's Hospital research project to talk about the student outcomes focused changes from changing the bus schedules. And I think those are important things to put in the minute, meeting minutes. And I'm wondering whether, given the time, and I don't want to pencil whip or or burn time here, whether we might move this to the next legislative meeting and come up with some agreeable language. And then I believe Director Rankin had something to say as well, or at least she did this afternoon in our email conversations. Thank you so much.
So I see Director Hampson's hand. Let me go ahead and answer her question really quickly, and then we'll move to Director Rankin. Go ahead, Director Hampson.
Well, we're having discussion before emotions on the table, so.
Yeah.
I would move, to just get back on track, I would move approval of the meeting minutes from the December 15th, 2021 regular board meeting to start, and then I had another comment once we get back to discussion.
I believe we are back on track, so that would require a second. Okay, so.
I can give a second if you.
I'm trying to understand what's going on.
Yeah, I'm a little, so can we get some support with procedure on this? Just to see what needs to happen so we can make sure that we're on track.
President Hershey, we just missed the step of having the motion in the second before we moved into discussion. So I think I've heard the motion now for approval of December 15th minutes from Vice President Hampson, and so the next step would be a second on that motion.
Okay, that's what I thought.
And I am comfortable with second, second.
Okay, fantastic. So it is clear that we may now move into discussion. Is that correct? Okay, so go ahead, Director Hampson.
These are regular board meeting minutes. It's televised, it's recorded. We do not. It is neither best practice nor is it our practice to have a discussion narrative in our minutes. It's readily accessible, and anytime you remove, re-report something and remove it from the recorded version, then it becomes an interpretation. So I strongly oppose adding narrative to our regular board meeting minutes.
Okay, thank you. Director Rankin?
Well, maybe this is somewhere in between Director Harris and Director Hampson, I'm not sure. But in terms of what was noted in that particular conversation that Director Harris mentioned, the children's study, I also missed seeing that there was a discussion about the relationship between changing changing transportation standards for budget, but that there is also currently a process in operations of transportation service standards that was mentioned, and especially as it ties to student outcomes. I just was missing seeing that those two things had been tied together. I don't know if that's narrative or fact, but.
Okay, thank you. All right, so we will now move to a vote, and I will pass it over to Ms. Wilson Jones for the roll call, please.
Calling the vote on the approval of the December 15th minutes, starting with Director Sargu.
Am I saying yes? I don't know what the answer here is. We're voting on whether, I kind of lost a thread. We're voting on whether to approve the December 15 minutes, correct?
That is, yeah, sorry. That is the motion that President Hershey had called for the vote on.
And I'm sorry, this is General Counsel Greg Narver. Can I jump in for a second? There was, there was suggestion from one of the directors that there might be a motion offered to defer consideration of the minutes. And I didn't know if that motion was going to be offered or if you needed to recognize somebody for a motion to defer consideration until the vote, until you took a vote on approving them or not. I haven't heard anyone offer that, but there was a suggestion that it might be offered, and it would be better to resolve first whether we're going to, whether the board will vote on approving these minutes at this meeting, and then if so, proceed to the vote on whether to approve them or not.
Okay, so it sounds like in order for us to push this to the next meeting so that the corrections can be made, there would need to be a motion to suggest to do that.
Yes, there would be a motion to postpone consideration of approval of these minutes to the next legislative meeting. If that motion is seconded, you can discuss it if you like, and then the board would decide whether or not to defer consideration or keep it at this meeting, and then if kept at this meeting, you'd proceed on the vote to approve them.
The joys of political procedure. Wonderful.
So moved.
And I'm sorry, Director Harris, I think we need something more specific than so moved. I think you would be bringing a motion to postpone consideration to the next legislative meeting.
I move that we postpone consideration of the December 15th, 2021 minutes of the legislative session to the next legislative meeting so that we might collaborate and agree on any amendments.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. It has been moved and properly seconded. We will now move to a vote. Ms. Wilson Jones, I believe now it is your opportunity to call for the roll.
Thank you, President Hershey. And can I just confirm the second was from Director Rivera Smith?
That is correct.
Okay, thank you. So calling the vote now on the motion to postpone consideration, starting with Director Song Moritz.
Nay.
Can you repeat that? Apologies.
Nay.
Vice President Hampson?
Nay.
Director Harris?
Yay.
Director Rankin?
Sorry, the vote, can you clarify for me what the, whether or not to defer?
That is correct, Director Rankin. It's a motion to postpone approval of these minutes to the next meeting, essentially.
Gotcha. Okay, I'm actually going to backtrack on my previous comments and vote no.
Director Rivera Smith?
Aye.
Director Sargu?
Nay.
President Hershey?
Abstain.
This motion has not passed with a vote of two yes to four no and one abstention.
That sounds correct to me. Okay, so procedurally, do we now move back to the previous motion? Okay, that's what I thought.
Correct.
All right, so do I need to call for another motion or can we move directly to the vote?
I already moved.
That's what I thought.
You can move directly to the vote.
Okay, hold on one, okay, go ahead, Michelle. What's your question? Really quickly.
I just need it clearly stated what that, because my confusion, I think now was justified based on what just happened. So I don't want to be confused. I want to know exactly what we're doing, and so I'm just making a request that it be clearly stated. That's all.
Sure. I can restate the motion. I move approval for, of the minutes from the December 15th, 2021 board meeting.
Okay, so that is what we are doing. All right, so this has already been moved and seconded, so Ms. Wilson Jones, would you please call the roll?
Director Sargu?
I vote yes.
Director Song Moritz?
Yes.
Vice President Hampson?
Aye.
Director Harris?
Nay.
Director Rankin?
Aye.
Director Rivera Smith?
Aye.
And President Hershey?
Aye.
This motion, this most, motion has passed by a vote of six yes to one no.
Okay, thank you very much. I certainly do appreciate it. Let's see here now. Okay. We have now reached the Board Committee Reports section of the agenda. We will hear briefly now from the chairs of each of our boards for committee, starting with Audit and Finance Committee. Vice President Hampson, would you like to share any updates?
Can you come back to me? Sorry, I just need to toggle some documents.
Absolutely. The Executive Committee has not met yet, but we will be meeting next Wednesday morning, if I'm not mistaken. That is the 19th. Is that correct? Yep. We'll be meeting on, or is it the 18th? Let me double check. Nope, it's the 19th, so we will have an update for you next legislative meeting. Director Harris, I see your hand.
No, I'm putting it down before I start talking, so I don't leave it on.
Nicely done.
I rec, I recollect that the Executive Committee had a special meeting last week.
Ah, yes.
With respect to the superintendent's search process.
Yes.
And I'm wondering if you want to address that, sir.
Thank you for that reminder. Sure, I would be more than happy to. So we met with our search firm, HYA and Associates, on our superintendent's search process, which is now underway. We went over some of the procedural pieces on how the search will be conducted. We gave feedback. I know that I have completed an interview, and I know a few other board directors have as well, providing feedback on community groups that will be reached out to, both in an individual and group capacity, as well as got a few questions answered about how we will push forward and what the timeline is. So that's pretty much all we know at this point. We are really excited for them to begin their work. I know that they are reaching out to community members as early as this or next week. So if you are interested in providing feedback, I know that there will be opportunities for surveys and other opportunities for the general public to give us information on what their priorities are for our next superintendent. So be on the lookout for that. And if you have any questions, you are always more than welcome to email the board or the board office, whatever is your typical way of getting ahold of us, and we'll be happy to get back to you in a timely fashion. So thank you for that reminder, Director Harris. That is incredibly important, and I would be remiss if I let that fall off of our radar. Okay, getting back on track. Now we will hear from the Operations Committee. Director Rivera Smith, are you prepared to give some comments?
Yes, thank you.
Take it away.
Yes, wonderful. Our, so our next meeting is actually tomorrow, was a Thursday, January 13th. We're going to be meeting at 8:30 AM on, only on Teams. We're not having it in-person meeting for that. It's all virtual, along with the typical board committee, sorry, the board work plan and capital finance budget update. We're going to be seeing a few bars, one on the approval to repair and perform roof restoration coatings on four of our school rooftops, Whitman, Washington, Lowell, and Decatur. We're going to be seeing a couple bars on awarding architectural and engineering contracts for our Aki Elementary School Modernization and Edition Project, or not, sorry, yeah. I'm sorry, it's cool, sorry. And the Don Rogers Elementary School Replacement Project. We'll be doing a final acceptance on the Wing Loop Elementary School Building Project. And I think our most probably, when it'd be more, most interesting to people is the approval of the Student Assignment Transition Plan for 2022-23. The Student Assignment Transition Plan continues most of the assignment rules that were in effect this school year, but some of the highlights and changes will be discussed at our meeting, and some of the updates will be, will be updating some updating the programs to include new virtual, the, what, V O, Virtual Option Pilot Program. We'll be adding a definition for tiebreakers, removing some outdated language, and renaming a couple of our programs. We're going to be renaming the Bilingual Service Center Program to the Newcomer Program, and renaming SM2 to officially the Moderate Intensive Program. So those are things we'll be discussing as people are learning, probably, we're trying to inform the public that things starting committee, and then they move for board. So this isn't the last time you'll have a chance to hear about them. But if you want to drop in in the morning tomorrow, that's what we'll be discussing, and looking forward to it. Thank you.
Okay, fantastic. We will now move on to the Student Services Curriculum and Instruction Committee. Director Rankin, are you prepared to offer a few comments?
I am, thank you. I'm going to be pretty brief, and I'll also give a brief legislative update as the board liaison to WASDA and the state legislature. You might notice that I am in my car, so I'm just letting you know right now, President Hershey, I'm leaving Garfield High School. They had a rapid testing clinic today, and I got trained up so well last Monday at Jan's that I came to offer some support. So I'm in my car parked. I'll give you the update, and then I'm going to be unavailable for remarks or comments, but I'm going to listen to public testimony and get myself back to my house so I can join properly on Teams. So just letting you know that during public testimony, I will be here, I will be listening, but I will be driving, so I will not be picking up my phone or responding to anything. So SSC and I Committee, Student Services, Curriculum and Instruction, we have our first meeting of the new year next week on Tuesday, excuse me, on Tuesday. The agenda, I'm not sure if it's posted yet or not, but it should be available soon. We have frequent, frequently, frequent flying standing items. Black Studies, Ethic Studies, Gail Morris from Native Vet will be joining us for some time of memorial update and some other good things. In terms of the legislative updates, the state legislature session has started, started on Monday. It goes for 60 days. It's a short session, what's known as a short session in Washington State. Legislators don't, don't meet year-round. They meet in two different, or they meet in January, February-ish in off years, which we are in now. It's not a budget year. They approve their budget every other year. So the budget session was last year. So there's, the budget is set, but there's of course a lot of interesting bills and things to talk about. So I will be meeting weekly with staff to talk, to follow bills. There's also, there's a whole bunch of different organizations. also, there's a whole bunch of different organizations that do bill tracking, for anyone who's interested in following along, WASDA, which is the School Director Association, they do bill tracking, Washington State PTA does bill tracking, whole bunch of other organizations, I will be providing brief updates at our regular board meetings, and I will also be updating and connecting with board directors weekly about where are bills that we have on our legislative platform to support are, are happening, and talk to directors about advocacy and whatnot in, in collaboration with, in coordination with staff, so we're just starting that, super exciting, so heads up, and we, as elected officials on, in, in a district resource, which we are in right now in this meeting, we cannot ask people to advocate for anything on our behalf, but we can talk about facts, things that are happening, things that we are supporting, and anybody listening in can take that information and do with it what they will as we discuss it. So I'm going to turn off my camera and stuff now and listen in, and that's it from me for now.
Awesome, thank you so much, Director Rankin, please drive safely, we will now loop back to Director Hampson.
Thank you, so we had our first meeting of the year on Monday, and we are at a new time, we'll be meeting at eight a.m., we met at eight fifteen on Monday, we will be meeting at, at eight a.m. on our meeting times, and our next meeting is on February fourteenth, yes, Valentine's Day. The critical things that we discussed on Monday are, and I was just searching to see if I could find a link to it on our website, the really important Labor and Employee Relations audit that was done by Moss Adams, and I will check in with Associate Superintendent Noltrie to see if we can get that, a link to that either on the internal audit or the HR page, so that folks could see the, the updates to that really important work that started back in two thousand eighteen, and that is in many respects complete, and that there is no section of that work that has not been, that has not been begun, although some really critical parts of that work are ongoing, and are likely to be coming up to the board in the form of new policies, in particular around harassment, intimidation, and bullying, and some continuing conversation about making sure that we have appropriate student versus adult representation in those, in those policies. So, and then we did have one bit of discussion around making sure that as we're speaking about the aspects of this that are connected to the strategic plan, that we're also connecting then, them to student outcomes, as identified. We then had an excellent update with some perspective good news that relates to Director Rankin's comments about the state legislative agenda on some proposals relative to high needs areas for us, including transportation, nurses and counselors, and coming out in the governor's budget, and, and that was some, again, promising news, if not difficult to talk about, because we didn't want to get too hopeful, and then our standard accounting and budget updates for the year, we are, district and staff are managing our funds well, in spite of the looming crises that we have with respect to our structural deficit, and working very hard to advocate for and fill gaps wherever possible, and as you will, as we will see later on the agenda, there has been some, a little bit of relief in terms of funding for staff related to testing, and we'll hear about that when we get to that action item, so if anybody else on the Audit and Finance Committee thinks that I missed anything, you can feel free to speak up now, that's Director Rankin and Director Song Maritz, otherwise, if folks would like to join us on the fourteenth, I always encourage folks to, and I'm happy to see community members on there, because we do get excellent updates from our, our finance and budget staff. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. All right, so we will conclude this agenda with the item, with the report from Board Director Sargeu and Song Maritz on the Washington State Schools Directors Association Annual Conference, which was held in November. Are we prepared to give a brief report?
Sure, I can go ahead.
Great.
So, thank you for this opportunity to attend the WASDA conference, it was very helpful as a new board director, and there are three highlights I wanted to share with you, attending the board mini bootcamp, the group that I was part of had a really engaging conversation about using disaggregated data for our students, and just practically speaking, I learned the in and outs of the Open Public Meetings Act, so I'm feeling a lot of security about following the laws and the rules as a school board director. You know, what I most appreciated about this session was, I have it here, actually, they gave us something called the Washington State Board of Education gave us basically standards, right, when we're thinking about our students and setting them up for success, we, you know, give clear expectations for, for them, and it was very helpful to have this as a school board director, and in particular, in there, it defines helpful questions to ask ourselves for self-evaluation, so I'm really grateful for this resource and will be referring to it regularly. Another highlight for me was meeting fellow school board directors across Washington State, and it was very clear to me in my conversations with them, that a lot of the issues that we are dealing with in our school district are experienced across Washington State, so developing those relationships will be really important as we work together for, and try to identify solutions on a statewide basis. And among the sessions that I attended virtually on, I think it was a Saturday, was one hosted by Alyssa Mueller from the Washington State Board of Education, and she was just setting the vision for our state's mastery-based learning and the development of something called the Profile of a Graduate, and, you know, I'll just quote from one of the slides that I took a screenshot of, the profile of a graduate is not just the latest trend, it is a way of enabling educators to address all the important skills in the classroom that we want our students to learn beyond the academic content, such as critical thinking, problem-solving, and how to work well in a team, and I think it's wonderful that our state is thinking about, you know, the vision for our students as whole students, and something that I hope to engage with our state education leaders and community members in further developing, thank you.
Thank you for that report, Director Song Maritz, Director Sargeu, would you like to add anything?
Um, I, I had a similar, I would have similar feedback as Director Vivian, I did not attend the virtual sessions on Saturday, because I actually was in Chicago for my first vacation theoretically, in a number of years with one of my oldest children, or with my oldest child, but one of the things that I, that I appreciated, even though the format is really not conducive to everybody's learning style, so what I did was I took a lot of pictures of slides, but it was the opportunity to meet with other board members, particularly smaller districts who are less resourced, and to hear about the, the challenges and the struggles that they're encountering, you know, trying to procure what's best for their kids, but one of the slides of, one of the slides that I took a picture of, that I think directly connects to student outcomes-focused governance, and for those of you, just to remind you that, we actually didn't talk about student outcomes-focused governance until December, if, is that correct? If I have that right, I think it was December, is when we had our first sort of training meeting, but anyway, one of the slides, it says the board's responsibilities, mission, vision, and goals, and it says create goals, adjust goals, identify how to measure progress, monitor progress on a regular basis, and for any of those, any of those who know me and have heard me speak, I feel like it's really important to keep a broad view as, at least for me, it's important, I'm not going to speak for any other board director, but we've got to keep our eye on the whole system, and for me, that, thinking about the things that we need to do broadly versus everything that falls underneath each one of those things is really important, and so I was excited to see, to see that, I'm looking to see here if there's anything else. The other thing that I actually had a sidebar conversation, and I think this is an appropriate opportunity, given Superintendent Jones' comments, is the need in this time of COVID to be proactive, and quite honestly, back in November, when we attended this, we, there was very little conversation about Omicron, and by the end of November, the county infection rates had increased one hundred and ninety-five percent, and so, yes, we are almost at the peak of Omicron, but we are also at the beginning of a new variant that combines Omicron and Delta, and what we don't know, I'm a public health person, for those people, I know this is a little bit off what we were talking about, but this is an opportunity to say it, what we don't know is if it's going to materialize into anything or not, but what we can do is be proactive, so that we're not reactive, because it actually doesn't help our students and their families when we're reacting, and so I would just like to encourage us, including families, to understand that our district staff has a very difficult job to navigate this, and they are doing their level best, I do believe, to stay ahead of this, and so Omicron has taught us a lot, and I think moving forward, we can take those learnings, just like we can from that WASDA or WASDA, whatever the acronym is, conference, we've got to keep our eyes on the broader picture, and if there's one thing that I got out of that bootcamp, it was that.
Okay, wonderful, thank you all for that very robust report, I really appreciate y'all taking the time to represent our board so well at the conference, so thank you. Okay, we are about three minutes away from public testimony, are there any directors that would like to give their personal comments before we move in to public testimony? Help us shore it up on the back end.
Director Hersi, what types of comments are you?
Yeah, so board directors typically have a couple minutes, though we are, we are very loose with that timetable, now we are definitely at two minutes before public testimony, but a couple of minutes, just if you have anything that you want to share with community, anything that you might be working on, or any statements that you want to make for the public record, is typically how folks use it, you do not have to give comment, but it is available to you, should you so choose. Okay, looks like not a whole lot of folks are interested in giving a comment at this point, and that is perfectly fine, I don't believe we need to recess for such a short amount of time, but we will be beginning public testimony promptly at five o'clock, so if you need this opportunity to take a bio break, or get some water, whatever you might need to do, now would be the time.
Director Hersi? Thank you, President Hersi, and for those who have joined for testimony today, when I call your name, please press star six on the conference line to unmute yourself on the conference line, and then also make sure to unmute yourself on your device, and please remain muted until you hear your name called, if you're, if you have trouble unmuting in time, I will go back through the names again, to make sure that we are able to hear from folks who are on the line today, so the first speaker on today's testimony list is Rena Matisia Walker Burr, Rena Matisia Walker Burr.
Hi, can everybody hear me okay?
We can hear you, you can go ahead.
Okay. I'm sorry, give me one second. Okay, hi, my name is Rena Matisia, and I'm a current student at Cleveland High School. When students were anticipating their return to schools, we were promised we would be safe, we were promised our mental health would be prioritized, we were promised that we would return to a healthy environment, we were promised that BIPOC students would have a space and we would be accepted and be able to thrive without any fear of harm, and we were promised that we would stay alive, all these promises have been broken, because students do not feel safe, healthy, nor comfortable in SPS, this continues the cycle of broken promises that have been incurred. This continues the cycle of broken promises that have been occurring for far too long. Students continue to be put in danger because the Benjamins are put over the babies, and educators have to put their livelihoods on the line, just so we can feel ease. Living in the middle of a pandemic is not a choice we could make. But continuing to put students in harm's way is. Cleveland High School students have made demands that we ask to be met. One, district must be transparent about how many COVID cases are needed for the school to shut down. Two, district funds mental health resources for students, staff, and the community. Three, change what defines an instructional day for the 180-day requirement. Four, district provides immediate open spaces for students and educators after harmful instances to the community, such as our safety. Five, a meeting with Jay Inslee where youth are able to speak our truth, we request the district sets up this meeting. This is a, this call to action cannot be silenced any longer. So we ask you as a district to hear our call and give us an answer. Thank you.
The next speaker on today's testimony list is Chris Jackins. Chris Jackins.
My name is Chris Jackins, Box 84063, Seattle 98124. On the five items on today's consent agenda, two points. Number one, the board is contin- continuing to deliberately vote on the consent agenda prior to allowing public comment. This makes the board look autocratic, and it reduces board due diligence. Number two, I raised questions at the December 15th meeting on several of these items. The board has not addressed these questions. On district outside consultants, six points. Number one, on December 8th, the board seemed to agree with the board's outside consultant that the board should lead by example. Number two, following the board's example of not addressing questions, district staff should not answer questions from the board, and teachers should not answer questions from students. And the board expects teachers and students to meet in person, yet the board is only holding a remote meeting today. Number three, the board is taking the consultant's advice to monitor the superintendent as an excuse to ignore the public. But considering public input is mandated by state law. Number four, the consultant seemed to recommend that the board ignore state law, stating that quote, "State legislatures often task school boards with doing things that no school board should ever do," unquote. Number five, how much taxpayer money is the board paying this consultant? Number six, another consultant on participatory budgeting recommended seeking corporate and philanthropic matching funds. Instead, please do not encourage corporate influence and commercial advertising in the public schools. Thank you very much.
The next speaker on today's testimony list is Kaye Smith Blum. Kaye Smith Blum.
Can you hear?
We can hear you.
Good evening. As ramifications of COVID continue to reverberate across the Seattle Public Schools community, two things have become clear. Any future levy will face harsher scrutiny from the Seattle voters, and the inequities must be addressed immediately with real solutions. At a time like this, Seattle Schools needs a bigger and more well-defined vision. The opportunity for this lies in the development of the next BTA and Vex Levy Project list. We must focus our future capital dollars to both enhance the teacher-student relationship as well as alleviate our overcrowded schools. The big opportunity to do both is at the Seattle Center. During my tenure, we crafted the largest building cycle ever, Vex IV, and simultaneously, we envisioned what projects might be addressed in Vex V. That, those discussions included a bigger vision for the district-owned parking lot and the leased property of Memorial Stadium, both at the Seattle Center. Members of the board and SPS staff discussed with the City of Seattle a possible trade for the Mercer Street parking lot owned by the city for the district's parking lot on Fifth Avenue and Memorial Stadium lease. All properties discussed were adjacent to the center, located on flat, easily buildable land, and offered a variety of opportunities to encompass other learning aspects at the Seattle Center that still exist. As long as you, the board, control the Memorial Stadium lease and the ownership of the adjacent parking lot, this great opportunity exists for the creation of a K through 12 pathway at the Seattle Center, creating an equitable opportunity for an all-city draw because any student in our city that enters the downtown core. I urge the board to set aside any proposal for Memorial Stadium and the adjacent lot that might be under consideration currently, and think bigger and better. Thank you.
The next speaker is UT Hawkins. UT Hawkins.
Hello, I'm UT Hawkins, Vice President of the Seattle Education Association. Educators work with, live with, and care for our students each and every day. We know that to truly meet the state, the stated needs of our students, our decisions need to be informed by our students on their, about their ground, on-the-ground experiences. They feel the real impact that can, that consistently shifting staffing, programming, and services have on their learning, and the ability to meet needs like nutrition, special education, or mental health challenges. Our students' experiences and visions must be front and center in our conversations. SEA stands alongside, alongside our students as they speak out to ensure SPS adequately and equitably meets their needs. As educators, we understand how their demands for change to the instructional day definition would create more sustainable school year uh, for students and for their families. We also need to listen to their daily experiences of facing a pandemic and take seriously their calls for mental health support. What our students are feeling is a direct result of how our system is failing. We need to take heed and do better. Let's commit our responses to this pandemic to address their stated demands and asks. Educators are doing all we can in our capacity. But with the limits of our time and energies, it is our students who have found vision for a more effective way forward. I encourage every school board member and their administrator to listen closely and urgently, and act in advocacy on what our students are asking adults for help with. Thank you.
The next speaker is Sabrina Burr. Sabrina Burr. Sabrina, it looks like you are unmuted on the conference line, but we're not able to hear you yet. Oh, it looks like you're um, you're muted again, so if you want to press star, there we go. I can see that you're on the line, Sabrina, but we're still not able to hear you. It looks like you're unmuted on the line, but maybe your device is muted. I'm going to move to the next speaker, and we'll come back around and call your name again, Sabrina. The next speaker is Ashanti Proctor.
You there?
Oh, we can hear you now, Sabrina. Is that Sabrina?
Okay, great, thank you. Good evening, Superintendent Jones and school board directors. First, I want to thank you all for the hard work and the time you've been putting in during these unprecedented times. Throughout our district, despite being in the education business, many are being asked to do and to be so much more. Through immense fear, exhaustion, and uncertainty, great learning is happening in Seattle Public Schools. Our teachers have the most important job in America, and in SPS, they are doing their job, often buying their own K and 95 masks for safety. Teachers are exciting, igniting minds of students, and having students going home, talking about school in positive ways. Happier students are showing up at home. But the COVID numbers are rising, especially in our most diverse neighborhoods. My own child is going to school against me and her father's wishes. She is risking her health and the health of her loved ones for grades in her senior year, a choice she should not have to make. At what point are the numbers too high for the safety of staff, students, and families? We need to go remote for a week or two to get through the rise in the COVID numbers, to make sure we have the testing and a high-grade PTEs for all in our building. What will it take? Do we need to fill out Jay Inslee's voicemail and email? We must do better and be more intentional about communication. The two messages that went out to families before the one signed by Superintendent Jones before the break were problematic and eroded trust and community. And let's admit that we have no real family engagement in Seattle Public Schools. Just tell the truth. What is happening is because of principals and teachers, our native ed program, and McKinney-Vento. We have a lot of people working, making good money with dismal results. Seattle Public Schools is the only organization where you cannot perform for years and keep your job. We cannot afford for family engagement to be a standalone any longer. It needs to be under schools and student services. Our four pillars of family engagement need to be the vehicle that drives all of our engagement strategies throughout the district. The number one indicator for student success is not socioeconomic or zip code. It's family engagement, where we partner with families for student success. Student success plans are not even something I hear about in Seattle Public Schools. Family engagement must be repositioned on the org chart, and we need effective leadership immediately. Thank you.
The next speaker on the testimony list is Ashanti Proctor. Moving to next speaker, Kelsey McGrath. Graff? Kelsey McGrath. If I've called your name, and you're on the line, please press star six to unmute. Go to the next speaker, Marigold Wong. Marigold Wong. Moving on, Angela Calderon. Angela Calderon. Those are the remaining speakers on today's testimony list. So if there's anybody who has signed up for public testimony, who have called your name, um, please press star six to unmute now. President Hershey, I'm going to go through one more time. Um, Ashanti Proctor. Sheila Dunn. Kelsey McGrath. Marigold Wong. Angela Calderon. Not seeing anybody unmuting. So um, President Hershey, I believe that concludes today's testimony list.
All right, thank you, Ms. Wilson-Jones. And if there were any technical difficulties, I, I just want to invite those who signed up for public testimony tonight to please uh, join us again um, next week. We would love to hear from you. Okay, with that being said, that concludes our public testimony for this meeting. We will now move on to the items that were... Oh, well, we have not removed anything from the consent agenda, so we should be good. All right. Okay, so we are now moving on to our action items for tonight, of which we only have one. Acceptance of the Learn to Return L2R Labor Support Fund Grant for 2021-22. May I have a motion for this item?
This is Vice President Hampson. I move that the school board authorize the superintendent to execute the agreement with Health Commons Project attached to the school board action report, and accept grant funds in the amount of $3,797,362 for the Learn to Return Labor Support Fund, with any minor additions, deletions, and modifications deemed necessary by the superintendent, and to take any necessary actions to accept the grant funds. Immediate action is in the best interest of the district.
Second.
Okay, this item has been moved by Vice President Hampson and seconded by Director Rivera Smith. This item is on the agenda for introduction and action today, and was not reviewed by a board committee. Assistant Deputy Superintendent Carrie Campbell, I believe you will be briefing us.
Thank you. Good evening. Carrie Campbell, Assistant Deputy Superintendent. Tonight, I'm presenting the board action report to accept a Learn to Return Labor Support Funds grants for 2021-22. As mentioned, the grant amount is in the total of $3,797,362. Due to the short application timeframe and the urgency of the need, I'm bringing this forward tonight for introdu- introduction and action. If approved, these funds will help cover the cost of labor associated with our COVID-19 response, including reimbursement for 104 COVID response positions, the protected healthcare room positions at our schools, reimbursement for the con- some contact tracing nurses, key COVID response positions, and a new testing-related position, a testing manager, as well as a testing data administrator, as well as security staff to support our regional testing clinic in the southeast. Funding will also give SPS the extra capacity needed to finalize the design and the implementation of our Test to Stay program, as well as pooled screening testing to mitigation strategies recommended by the Department of Health. And I am now ready to answer any questions that board directors may have.
What wonderful news. Thank you for that, uh, Assistant Deputy Superintendent. Um, do we have any questions from our board directors? Okay, I see a couple of hands going up. I believe I saw Director Sarge use hand first.
Sure. Um, thank you for that overview. I am curious if there is a um, plan that has been developed, for example, for Test to Stay. Um, given the fact that um, the COVID-19 vaccination is actually not mandatory and for children as of to date. Um, I mean, that's just one example, so there would need to be some type of uh, way that we're, we're working with those families who have um, chosen in the moment that their children won't be vaccinated. But more curiously, um, is, and you don't need to cover the plan. I'm just wondering if we do have a plan. As somebody who works in public health and has been redeployed to do COVID work, you have to have a really strong plan um, with, with lots of human resources um, to actually roll out something like this. Um, it's no small undertaking.
Thank you. I appreciate your recognition that it's no small undertaking. All of the testing we've been doing lately is quite a lot, which is why part of this grant request included um, funding for a testing manager. So the Test to Stay process is twofold. Um, one, you have to approve to build out your plan, and we've received initial approval from Public Health. And working with the Learn to Return um, program administrators, we've identified vendor that we would use um, that would provide the labor force. And so the next step is really building out that work plan, as you described. Um, and the, the hopes that by accepting these funds, we would have additional capacity to move it more quickly.
Okay, thank you. Uh, Director Rivera Smith.
Thank you. Thank you, um, Assistant Deputy Superintendent Campbell. Make sure I get that right. Um, thank you for that information. It really is exciting. I'm wondering, what is the um, what? What... Accepting these funds, what effect is that gonna have on our current budget? Because this is all reimbursement. So it's all money already spent? And therefore, the money that was gonna be spent on these items it's reimbursing for? So should explain how, what's freed up, and what does this mean for us as far as our budget goes?
Yeah. So, working with Assistant Superintendent Bergy, we and her staff, we went through and identified a lot of COVID-related expenditures. And actually, we received half of what we requested. So I just want to make sure that that's clear to the board. We're super excited about this award, and we asked for more. Because we are currently using a lot of our ESAR funds to uphold required health protocols. And so these reimbursed... This reimbursement or investment of funds from the CDC via DOH would allow us to support in other areas where we have used ESAR funds instead of for instruction or social emotional supports. It would allow us to redirect funds that we'd already expended. And then some of the funds are new. This is one-time funds, I should have mentioned. The testing manager would end at the end of the fiscal year, as well as the testing manager... Or the testing coordinator, I'm sorry, data coordinator.
Thank you for that. So I'm thinking, so I see in the Board Action Report here that the community engagement tool is not used because of the urgency, because it comes in, this is all happening so quickly, and I get that. So I'm wondering, now that we're getting the money, and it's freeing up money that was otherwise going to be used, like the ESAR funds, are we going to engage the community engagement tool processes to decide how that now available ESAR funds might be used? Or is there some... I'm just trying to find ways that we still can... You know, we didn't have a chance to, but how can we still make sure that we fulfill our commitment to community engagement?
Yeah, related to this Board Action Report. For the acceptance of the funds, I would not say that we will do any engagement. We may want to do engagement with some of our key stakeholders, like Seattle Council, PTSA, et cetera, CSAC, around the deployment of Test to Stay. So any large operational change like this, we would phase in implementation. And so that is a place where we can do engagement. I can't speak to how engagement will be funded for other ESAR deliverables. That's something that I would leave to Assistant Superintendent Bergy and Assistant Superintendent Bush to respond to. But I think that as we continue to roll out our testing program, there are places to engage with our community about how we prioritize initial phasing of supports.
That sounds great. Thank you. No further questions.
Okay, Director Rankin. And if you've already...
Thank you.
If you could lower your hand, that would be super helpful. Take it away, Director Rankin. Sorry to interrupt.
Thank you so much. Yes, I'm in my home now. At my cold, dark, old spot in my house. Meetings. Yeah, I... It was exciting to see this, but then also the realization that it's really mitigating funds that we have already spent. So it's great. And this is all helping us fulfill requirements by... You know, it's health and safety. This is public health that we're doing. And so it's great that those ESAR dollars will be sort of reimbursed, because, you know, CARES Act money went to all kinds of different entities, including the Washington State Department of Health. And part of the CARES Act, ESAR... And I know, Michelle, I'm sorry, I can't remember what all the acronyms are, but the CARES Act is the federal money that was deployed to states for COVID relief. And then the ESAR is the specific elementary and secondary schools' funds within that. So we got ESAR funds that were supposed to be for students, and we're ending up spending a lot of those on public health, which is necessary, but also very hard to do, when you're also already trying to do education. So it's great that we're getting some of that money reimbursed by the Return to Learn, which is a public health initiative. But my question is still about the labor. So all of the various things that have been made available to our districts have come with physical materials. You know, if somebody from the warehouse will drive three hours in the snow over winter break to get them, for example. But the materials have been made available. And then lab processing for PCR testing and all of that has been available, made available. But the district has still had to provide those COVID rooms, monitoring, and people to give those PCR testing. And then, as we have seen, you know, me today and a bunch of us last week from the board and central office, the staffing to actually stand up these clinics is still on us. So, you know, we're all supposed to be doing education, not creating testing protocols and staffing clinics. It's incredible what we, as a district, have been able to do. And honestly, I'm like, man, if we decide we... Well, something, we can do it, and I'm gonna remember that for the future. If we decide we're gonna do it, we are all in. This is not necessarily something we should have to go all in, because there should be more support around us. So my question is, and obviously, I'm in support of accepting this fund, but I notice you're still saying that some of it is for a staffing manager that we are hiring, which means that that is ultimately someone who is still being managed by our superintendent, who's supposed to be managing education. So that's adding, you know, adding more responsibilities to a staff that was designed to manage and charged, is charged with providing education. So my question, I guess, is are there going to be more grants like this that are available to us? And you also said that we applied for more than we received. Is there any indication that any more labor or outside support is coming? Or is this just sort of, yeah, you can apply to be reimbursed for some stuff?
So there is another, and I do not remember the name of the grant off the top of my head. I'll get it for everyone, and I'll make sure it gets distributed. There is another grant that we can apply for that Audrey Corns, who is our senior project manager in our office, and I want to give great credit to her and Joel Lindberg's team for pulling this grant off in such a short timeframe. They will be applying for another funding source. But you are correct that we are having to ask for either reimbursement or grant funds to support a lot of the labor force that's required to lift these highly recommended, if not required, mitigation strategies.
Awesome. Thank you, Director Hampson.
Thank you. Kind of a follow-up. I was just curious and a little... I am so grateful that we're getting this money. And then was just wondering, are we gonna... Is there gonna pretty much be a lump sum? It says monthly for reimbursement.
I think that the way that I read the contract is that... And again, Assistant Superintendent Bergy, I don't know if she's on the call, and she can provide more information. But once the contract is executed, we will get over the... From now through the end of the contract, we'll get a lump sum each month. So I'm hoping the reporting is very simple.
Yeah, I guess that was... I was a little surprised that it went to this sort of level of reimbursement as if we're sort of, you know, constructing a building or something, or trying to, you know, have contingencies and that kind of thing. It just, it was a little frustrating to see that they would layer on that level of administration. But at the same time, I have also heard that that is... That the feds are doing that on a number of different fronts. And so that's a little bit frustrating, because there is no capacity for additional administration in any of this. So I'm sorry if that ends up being an additional burden. However, I am grateful that we were able to get some of this reimbursed, even if it is, in fact, covering the cost of people who are doing duties that are, should be teaching and learning, as Director Rankin said. So, okay, that was my only point of clarification. Thank you.
Thank you, Director Hampson. Any other questions before we move on? Okay, thank you for being so responsive, Deputy... Assistant Deputy Superintendent? There we go, nailed it. Right on. Thank you so much. Okay, we will now move to the vote on this item. Now, Director, let's see. Okay, so Ms. Wilson-Jones, will you call for the roll, please?
Yes, Director Rivera Smith.
Aye.
Director Sargu?
Yes.
Director Song Moritz?
Aye.
Vice President Hampson?
Aye.
Director Harris?
Aye, and big thanks.
Director Rankin?
Aye.
President Hershey?
Very graciously, aye.
This motion has passed unanimously.
Fantastic. And just, again, huge thank you to staff. I know that this is no small feat, but will make an immense difference. So thank you for all your hard work. Okay, so we have now come to the board comment section of our agenda. We, again, try to keep these succinct as possible, but I am not holding you to any specific time allotment. And also, you do not have to make comments if you do not wish to. So with that being said, we will begin with Director Hampson. Are you prepared at this time to make a few comments?
Yeah, I will just say that I hope that folks are taking time to breathe right now. And to that end, and in consideration of the fact that, as I mentioned when we went into the break, I might ask directors to think about what is it that we can start to communicate with all of our caregivers out there who are working to support our students in these very difficult environments? And so preliminarily, Director Sargu, and I believe Director Rankin and I, along with Manuela Sly and Sabrina Burr, are going to put together a little town hall to talk with our families, caregivers, around our own needs for wellness and health, because I think we're at a point where we gotta be really careful that if we're not caring for ourselves, we're not going to be able to give our best to our kids, and we really need to model that for them. So that's my only real point tonight. And to Superintendent Jones' point on prom, I am really excited about that. I do think that it's really, really important. And it probably sounds maybe like we're getting out ahead of ourselves, but if we can't make that commitment to our students at this point and give them that to look forward to, you know, we've really lost sight of things. So I appreciate that. And personally, we'll be doing some work to help support that effort more broadly in the community, and more on that later. So thank you very much, and hang in there this week, everyone.
Thank you, Vice President Hampson. Director Harris?
Extraordinary gratitude and thanks for the work that our staff is doing and for the first responders and the daycare providers and the bus drivers and the custodians and nutrition services. They often don't get lifted up as much as they should. And I, for one, am extraordinarily grateful. And I see them as part of the SPS family. I couldn't agree more with Vice President Hampson's comments. If we don't take care of ourselves, it's the, you know, airplane mask before helping someone else. These are radically bizarre times. We don't know what's coming next. Thank you, Superintendent Jones, for giving our seniors hope that they will have a prom. I hope we can extend that as well, that they will have an in-person graduation. Last year was very, very different. But it's my hope that we can have a socially responsible, healthy, responsible, six feet apart, limited families and friends, even though that breaks my heart. But I hope that we can make a decision soon that that is, in fact, going to happen. Again, I troll social media as an early warning system. I appreciate the abject fear and anxiety that folks are coming in with. I appreciate the student voices. I would like to see numbers, fiscal notes, if you will, attached to the student demands. Because after our several budget meetings, I'm not quite sure how we are, in fact, going to afford those demands. And yes, we've been looking for counselors for years and been unable to up the ratio. So when we have that conversation, if we can put some numbers on that and where those funds are coming from, I think it's a more thoughtful and responsible conversation. And I know that our extraordinarily capable staff can help those students figure out what those numbers are and what the algorithms are that we need to be taking into account. I very much appreciate the comments and public testimony tonight. I'm extremely happy to see SEA testifying publicly. I would like to have a couple of follow-up conversations, and I invite a couple of my colleagues and friends to join me on those conversations. But I feel like I'm getting whiplash on social media, and half the world wants in-person schooling, and the other half wants to be online. And we have all these wonderful parameters, and if you will, guardrails from the feds, from the state, et cetera. And the other thing I want to point out is it's my understanding that a bill will be dropping in the legislature that apparently our Superintendent of Public Instruction in Washington thinks that that position ought to be a gubernatorial-appointed position. And given how incredibly interesting policies, politics, statutory frameworks are with respect to education, that concerns me greatly. So keep that on our horizon. And the last thing is, levy season is coming up. I, in West Seattle, on my own time and my own dime, will be a sign repository. And it's an honor, and it's a privilege, and I appreciate my colleagues beyond, as well as the staff. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Director Harris. Director Rivera Smith?
Thank you. I'll start with, I guess, thank you to all our public testimony speakers for being here. I'm really, I will say though, John, I'm really, you know, kind of troubled that somebody couldn't get through, and I hope we can figure out a way to rectify that. I'm sure that Ellie is on it already. I want to make sure that everybody who wants to take advantage of the opportunity to speak to us gets to be able to do that. So hopefully, we can figure out what went wrong there and reach those people. But for the ones who were here, thank you, Nina Mateja, for coming in and sharing your truths about what the students are saying. And we definitely want to listen to that. I'm trying to find more information on the demands you listed. I haven't seen any email in my inbox, but maybe I missed it. I'll keep looking, because I would love to hear more about those demands. So if you haven't, if there isn't been any kind of email to us yet, please do that, because definitely want to learn more. Chris Jackins, as always, your points are well taken, and I think we addressed a couple of them today, so hopefully that helped. Case McBlum, thank you for... Um, Case McBlum, thank you for your service to our district. Um, definitely excited to hear about your thoughts on the, um, potential for the Seattle Center properties that we own and control. That is something that is on our minds and we talk a lot about it. So, um, it's great to hear some of your insights from the, from your experience in our district. Uh, Yudi Hopkins, thank you for also being here and speaking and helping share, uh, amplify the voice of our students. And of course of your, um, your membership. Sabrina, thank you as always for your hard work. I know you come and thank us, but really, you know, I know we should thank you too, because you do so much to make sure our families have a voice in our district. So, thank you for that. Your recommendation about going remote, I can't say I disagree because I, I, I'm very concerned with, um, the position we're putting our families in about choosing health and safety over schooling. That is not a position they should have to make. So, but I know it's hard. I, I'm not trying to, uh, you know, say that I have the answer. Um, but I, I think that, you know, we, we want, we need to be very intentional and careful as we go through this, but right now. Because as much as the city depends on us to keep kids in schools, that, and still, you know, work and do all the things that we need the city people to do. Um, you know, we need to think about what's best for our students. And in effect, that's for also the rest of the city. So, thank you for speaking tonight. Again, I hope we can get the other people in somehow and hear from whoever wasn't able to speak. I'm gonna end by, um, saying that we did go to, uh, our board as a whole and someone else is probably gonna talk about this too, because it was such a powerful experience. Uh, we went and saw the American History Traveling Museum, uh, the Unspoken Truths. It's an exhibition created and curated by storyteller Mr. Delbert Richardson. Uh, actually had been in the John Safford Center about two years ago, uh, and a lot of us got to see it then, but seeing it, uh, was that yesterday? I remember. Yeah, oh, time is flying. Um, but seeing it there over at the, um, over at the King Street Station was amazing. It's a chronological journey through the beginnings of Black people's origins in Africa, through American chattel slavery, the Jim Crow era, all the way up to modern day African-American inventors, originators and innovators. So it was just so powerful. And I asked Dr. Jones afterwards. I said, "How can we get every SPS classroom to this exhibit?" And I meant it. I had to run real fast, so. But I said it and I had to run, but that if, I, I feel like we have to do that. We have to make that happen somehow. Maybe it's, whether it's getting them to it or it to them, because you know, maybe it's, this is a video thing or something we can do. But it was such an incredibly powerful experience that all of our students of all our races, ethnicities, nationalities really need to see it. So, I, um, I put that out there to see how can we make that happen. Um, but I'll, I'm gonna end right there. Thank you.
Thank you, Director Rivera Smith. Uh, we will now move on to Director Rankin.
Thank you. Yeah, I totally, I think a video of the exhibit that everyone can see might be amazing because having, having Mr. Richardson there himself was something that was really powerful and, um, and we couldn't do that for every school, every classroom. But, you know, he, he is such a great tour guide of his collection. Anyway, yes, I, I second that, Lisa. I, let's see. Is this our, this is our first regular meeting of the new year, which seems really bizarre because, that means that we were just on break and, uh, it's sort of impossible because a lot has happened in the last week and a half. I want to really thank you Superintendent Jones for, well, a whole host of things, but specifically today for your comments, making clear something I've been trying to share with people to understand where decisions get made and who has power over what. So, thank you for making it clear about, um, uh, remote versus not remote. It's not, it's, it's, it's not based on, um, our feelings or opinions or how many emails we get. It's a state requirement to be in person as we can and the superintendent can make operational, um, decisions about, uh, staffing. And that's pretty much it. And that, and the Health Department can, can tell us that, you know, there's an outbreak. But leading, leading from that, um, something that I really want to say in this setting and, and in public that I feel like is just nationally about, um, COVID is schools are congregate settings that people are bringing COVID too. I have not seen data and there does not seem to be data out there that school is a place that is COVID. And I want to give huge props to SCA and SPS during, um, uh, the collective, or the MOU creation last year. Because I really think that a huge part of our success in keeping transmission down within our buildings is because SCA really pushed for and demanded very consistent across all buildings, high, high standards in ventilation and, and filtration. And combined with a statewide, um, vaccine mandate for staff in K-12 and combined with a statewide mandate for mask wearing. We are doing, I mean, everybody for as hard as they're working to keep their masks on, remind kids and, and adults that sometimes to pull them up over their nose. Our buildings, between the partnership between SCA and then the amazing work of our operations team. Our buildings are some of the best places to be in terms of transmission of COVID. The problem, of course, is that we're not immune from everything that happens around us. And so as people are exposed and become ill or are exposed in our quarantining out of precautions, they still can't come to school, uh, either as teachers or as students. And so, um, but, but I just kind of want, I feel like schools are ending up taking a lot of the brunt of kind of everything. And really, it's adult behavior outside of school that is continuing to spread COVID. And then we have to mitigate it when everybody comes to our buildings. And we're doing that as best we can because we care so much and we all know and learned even more last year that in-person is the best place for our students to learn. But there, and there's a ton of work, safety-wise and identity safety-wise, it's to do in our buildings. Let me be clear, I'm talking specifically about COVID protocols. But in terms of that, we've done an incredible job keeping each other safe from the spread of COVID within our school buildings. And so, but I, attached to that, I'm really hungry for some data. I know that fear and anxiety is happening out there and people, and I know that kids, even though our buildings are, you know, we're doing a great job with the filtration and ventilation and everything, worrying about, is the person next to me vaccinated? Is my mask fitting right? Is my, you know, is my grandma okay? At, you know, all these different things are still, are, it's still having a huge impact and distracting students from being able to, to learn at their best. And, um, but I'm, I'm, I, I have asked, I think, the Su, the Deputy Superintendent Gannon, and I just want to reiterate my asks for, and I know our system doesn't do a great job of talking to each other between buildings. I know we have building level data, but as, as soon as we can, I would really like to see what our staff absences and what our student absenteeism actually looks like. Because, uh, it, it's hard to know what we're actually talking about in terms of missed instructional time and trying to reach kids at home or try, you know, all these different things without us knowing kind of what the picture is. And then of course, the impacts on different schools or different, um, demographic students, if there's anything disproportionate that we should be looking at. So as soon as that data is available, I would really like to see it, um, and understand. I am going to again, throw out that again, I know everybody's so exhausted and we're all put to our limit in doing jobs that are not our jobs under any, any other, um, scenario. You know, from the classroom to central office. It's, it's incredible how much people are putting into keeping this going, but all we have is each other. So if we're gonna keep doing this, that's what we need to do. But I'm gonna throw out and ask a, a plea, a suggestion that this is again, an opportunity for us to be flexible and focus on the needs of our students and move away from the idea that students are little vessels to pour information into and that teachers are, are, you know, faceless, replaceable widgets to deliver that information. None of those things are true. And so even if we didn't have a substitute shortage, having a revolving door of who's in front of you when you depend on your, your teacher that you trust and knows you to deliver curriculum, it's still gonna have an impact. So, you know, the idea that we're getting from this date that we have to stay in person, that we have to keep going, I am kind of putting out there that I don't think that necessarily means, and maybe the requirements are beyond what I'm understanding right now. But I don't think that has to mean that we are on a straight, regular speed trajectory in terms of new, new instructional material. There's so much rich learning that can happen without us focusing on content delivery. And so my ask or suggestion is that we think about, as we know that we don't get to make the determination to just pivot to remote and that there's a lot of reasons that's not a good thing for students. How do we maintain connection with educators? How do we maintain learning for students? Without having the situations where a teacher's wondering, okay, I have a lesson planned for today, a third of my class is missing. Do I do the lesson? And then have to teach it again when those kids come back and maybe other kids are missing? Do I do the lesson? Do I give the lesson to a sub who doesn't know my students, who maybe won't deliver it as effectively? Maybe they will, but I don't know. Do I put a pause? What about the kids who are quarantining at home? Do I, you know, touch base with them? It's, it's, I'm thinking about different places where we can relieve pressure. One is definitely if we stopped running a public health agency. But the other one is in terms of this kind of steadfast um, track of, of a, a normal pace of curriculum delivery and that it doesn't matter what teacher is in front of your kid because that's just not the reality. So, I know that for instructional minutes to count, it is educational activities as delivered by a district employee, a district educator. That doesn't mean in keeping the regular pace. And now I'm not suggesting that we relax providing education. I'm suggesting we use this as an opportunity to go back to our direction to the year about focusing on students with the highest needs. What would it look like if we refocus our resources? If instead of saying, there's not enough coverage in the building, we're gonna pull special education IAs to cover gen ed classes? It's not okay. What if instead we said, how do we, who's in the building today? How do we maximize student learning and connection? How do we take a moment to figure out what students need from us right now? How do we use this as an advantage to maybe give additional to support to students with IEPs who are, who have been struggling to keep pace? Maybe we do walking field trips and talk about the history of our neighborhood, get in some ethnic studies, get in some outdoor learning. Get, you know, we have an opportunity to do a bunch of things, um, if we're allowed to, in spite of the fact that we are all under tremendous, um, stress and pressure. And maybe this is a little bit rose-colored glasses, but I, I'm trying to think of ways to relieve pressure for educators and, and just wrap her, wrap everything we have around our students. So, I don't know if that's, uh, something that's even possible under instructional requirements, but I wanted to throw that out. And, and I'd also really like to see some, some data, uh, about absences and the impact on that. So, that's definitely more than my two minutes. And, um, yes, thanks.
Thank you, Director Rankin. We will now move on to Director Sargu.
Thank you, President Hersi. I first want to, um, just commend Ms. Walker Burr. I'm not sure if they are still on the phone. But that's an example of a young person, um, who clearly has had, um, an experience that has prepared her to be a leader and to speak. What she demonstrated was this concept that I call, uh, it's better to aim high and miss than aim low and hit. And boy, did she bring us some high bar things to consider. And that's exactly what we want our youth to do. We want them to aim high because what if she aimed low? There is no accomplishment in aiming low and hitting their, those, those types of goals. She set the bar high. It's the adult's job to figure it out. Will we be a hundred percent successful? That's not the point. The point is she represented to us what it looks like to aim high. Um, and so, um, I'm not sure, um, if they're still on the phone or if their parents happen to be on the phone. But I just want to say, good job. The other thing I'd like to just circle back around is, um, I, I, I actually know that COVID is spreading in the schools. I'm at the intersection, um, at public health. I have staff members who have kids in Seattle Public Schools and thirty-three percent of my staff have come down with COVID. If you know anything about research, thirty-three percent is statistically significant in a very large way. Two of those families, their children brought, brought it home from school and one of them, uh, sort of indirectly from school, but sporting event connected to school. So, it is spreading in schools. The other thing to consider, and, and this is not an excuse, what we know about Omicron is that its impacts are not as, as devastating as previous variants, variants for people who have been vaccinated. Right? Like there's lots of data around that and we cannot use that as, oh, well, we'll just, you know, we'll just react to situations that seem to be getting out of control. And so I stated earlier, we need to be proactive. There are more variants coming and just like Omicron, we didn't know what Omicron was gonna bring to us. We first heard about it in South Africa. And I'm telling you, within less than two weeks, it was devastating our country. So we can use this as, as learning to say, what if this Omicron Delta, I forget what the name of it is. They've already named it. The Omicron Delta variant, which actually is really concerning to public health officials. Very, very concerning. We don't know its impact, but we know that it could get here, just like the Omicron. And we need to proactively prepare. For those, um, community members on the call, um, I have spent over three decades, um, in my professional work supporting the social, emotional, mental health needs of our youngest citizens. School is where they need to be. I'm a hundred percent in support of keeping schools open. But I'm also practical that if we need to close schools for a week or two weeks, I don't think we'll ever return to what we had in that first year of our pandemic. I don't see it happening. And please, somebody say from my lips to God's ears, because we all need to get out of this. We need to get out of this. We are all tired. And it is the responsibility, responsibility of the adults to be proactive. We cannot move into this next phase if it's another variant reacting and waiting because that puts parents in a very difficult position. So for example, if we had, if we had said in early December, you know what? We, we've heard about this Omicron, we're, we're getting ready to send children home for two weeks over the break. What if we not have them return January third, but have them return, uh, on Monday or Tuesday, January eighteenth, right? We don't know where we would be, right? But what we know is that the spread that resulted from that break would have been somewhat mitigated, not a hundred percent, but somewhat mitigated coming back to school. And so, now we know, right? And I do believe our, our administrators actually made the best decision with the information that they had in the moment. And what we know now is that things are out of control. Like literally, Omicron is out of control. And so, we need to prepare for the next variant. I'm just gonna say that. I'm no prophetess. I'm no seer. I don't have a crystal ball, but I am in public health and I do follow the science. And we have another variant, if not multiple other variants emerging. And I think our assumption should be, what is the next Omicron? Not if, but when. Just like the public health officials are saying, we all need to prepare for when we get COVID, not if. Because with as, as contagious as Omicron- Because with as as contagious as Omicron is, we are likely all to get it. And at some point, I think we're likely all to get some variant of COVID. And so we need to prepare for the when, not the if. And that's something we can do as adult leaders. We can be proactive. And I think parents, if we communicate, communication is important. If we say it is possible that we might have to close schools for a week. And we have a robust plan of what's gonna happen in that week. Not every parent is gonna be happy. But every parent can be prepared. Every family can be prepared. Because the goal is mitigation to stop the spread. So that at some point, we don't have to close schools. That's our goal. At some point, we can keep kids in school five days a week. So they're not going deep into the summer trying to do makeup days because that's what we may be looking at. So we can be proactive, and that is my my caution and my request. Of all of us is that we prepare for the next variant. And that we make our decisions based on when it happens. What is our rubric for saying, okay, if this looks like it's going towards Omicron, what do we need to do to stop the spread? We have midwinter break coming. Oh, my goodness. We'll know then if that new variant is here. It will be here before then. But we'll know then what we're dealing with. I'm I'm predicting it's gonna be here well before late February, based on what is happening now. And so I encourage us as adults to listen to some of these young people. Right? Our young people actually are really pretty smart. Right? Like, like um Serena Burr said, against her parents' wishes, what they are in doing. In in allowing the child to make the decision is they're preparing her. For what it means to to make adult decisions. And then what it means when there are consequences consequences that result of at of those decisions. I'm making an assumption here that that is a family connection, just based on the last name. So if Serena's on the call. And that's not your child, or or if Ms. Walker Burr Burr is on the call, and Serena's not your mom, please forgive me. But my point is whoever that child's parents are. They are doing their job and they're doing their job well. And she represents the potential. And the kind of students we have in Seattle Public Schools, that that Ms. Walker Burr is not an accident. She's not an anomaly and she's not an exception. She just happens to be here today and testifying with us. So as we move on, um, that's what I'm encouraging us to do. Is to be prepared. To actually have a plan. Right? For if we face another variant that is just like Omicron, what have we learned from Omicron? And what different decisions will we make? Because that's in the best interest and safety of our staff, our students, our janitors. Our nutrition services people and their families. Like, we don't see the, we don't see the extensions. But the families, right? We don't hear about the family members that end up in the hospital as a result of their child bringing home COVID. I have a personal story. I don't want to see that again. It's a scary situation to be in. And so I'm asking parents. To truly believe and trust that our superintendent is actually making the best possible decisions. That he can make with the data and information that he has real time. Not a job I would want. In this time, everything is changing minute by minute. And for the most part, my expectations is that he makes the right decisions most of the time. Because there's no way in this changing dynamic environment that he's actually literally. Like with, you know, if we are being realistic, that he's gonna be able to make the right decision. Every single time, every single minute of every single day, from the time he gets up. To do this job to the time he turns off the computer and the phone so he can spend time with his family. And so I trust. That he is leading in the best possible way. And when there is a decision. That doesn't um make us all happy, because if I had my druthers. We would not be in school right now. We would be in school on January eighteenth. Because I really believe if I could look back at my crystal ball, that we wouldn't be here now, and that's Monday morning quarterbacking. We're here. It doesn't matter. But I do believe he is doing his level best to make the best decisions. And we have to trust him. We're not, he's not gonna make all of the people happy all of the time. But for the most part, he's doing a good job.
Okay, thank you for that, Director Sarge. Uh, Director Song Maritz.
Thank you. Um, it's been a intense few weeks and I first just wanna thank our district leadership team for working furiously. To prepare for the return to school buildings after winter break and continuing to make real time, day by day, difficult decisions. I have uh four nuggets I want to share today. First, I've been continuing to meet with our building leaders, our principals. And I know that we are all exhausted, but to those that are listening, if you have anything to give. Please drop a note to a building leader or principal that you know and thank them for their leadership. One of them described to me that working during this pandemic is like walking through a haunted house. You're just trying to exit and boo, something new and intense just keeps surprising you. And I. Really sad analogy. Um, I'm very grateful for their continued leadership in this pandemic, and I hope the community can join me in this gratitude. My uh kindergartner told me earlier this week that she had to go to the principal's office, and this is really uncharacteristic for her, so I asked her to tell me more. And she explained to me that Nurse Angie was meeting with all the kindergarten students to check their eyes and ears. And with all that our school nurses are doing, I was stunned to know that our vision and hearing exams are still happening. Some of you may know that my own hearing loss was suspected by a public school teacher, confirmed by a school nurse at one of these screenings. So I know all too well how important these screenings are. Um, school nurses, if you happen to be listening, um, I really would rather be resting, but if you need a volunteer to do these screenings, I'm so happy to do it. This morning, I had the pleasure of meeting with a local author, Lily Lamott. Uh, students from Dearborn Park Elementary School, school librarians Craig Seasholes, Kathleen Gillespie. As well as school librarians and teachers and students across our district. Our fourth and fifth grade students are currently participating in the Seattle Public Library's Global Reading Challenge. They are tasked to read eight books and then they will be competing in a district by trivia challenge. And author Lamott's book is one of our selections for this year. And when I'm thinking about our stated student-focused outcomes goals, a English language arts school. I am so excited about opportunities like this to gauge our broader community and supportive academic goals for all of our students. Uh, for those that are listening, I encourage you to have a list of the books. I have personally been enjoying them with my own fourth grader. Physical copies have been given to our participating school libraries, and they're also available electronically, thanks to Seattle Public Libraries. And thank you to our hardworking fourth and fifth grade readers. We are very proud of you. And finally, uh Director Rankin and I, and maybe other directors, will be hosting a virtual community meeting. With Seattle Council PTSD uh next Tuesday at seven PM to talk about COVID protocols and testing. Uh, we will be sharing out the details shortly, and I hope you can join us. So thank you, everyone, and stay healthy.
Uh, thank you, Director Song Maritz. And in the interest of time, I wanna get folks out of here really quickly. I'm gonna try to keep this succinct as succinct as possible. The only thing that I wanna offer tonight, other than extreme gratitude for Brother Delbert Richardson hosting us uh at the Unspoken Truths exhibit. Um, as well as our legislators who are hard at work solving some of the biggest problems that we have right now, especially in school funding. Knock on wood, we get a little bit of relief. We had a really wonderful meeting um with the Seattle delegation and a a new. Found breadth of collaboration and um just kinship in being able to fix these really giant problems that face our school district. I just wanna offer one thing before we close out. When we think that we are supporting children, I I really wanna give folks an opportunity to pause and really think about what that looks like. Because for me, that's gonna look completely different than it's going to for Dr. Jones. It's gonna look completely different than it's going to for our educators. It's gonna look completely different. Than some of my colleagues here tonight, and it's gonna look even more different for their parents, right? But though, we all have the same real and very. I don't even know the word, very intense desire to deliver on that aim of supporting children. And in this moment, when we are in so many ways chasing a moving target that is COVID and every one, two, three, four Greek letter alphabet. Of its variants, that becomes a really big challenge and one that we don't have the answers to, right? As an educator, uh even though I may not be in the classroom at this particular moment. It's difficult for me to think that I don't have the tools that I need to keep my kids safe. You know, I I don't have the resources that I need to help keep my children safe. And that creates fear, right? And when we have fear, oftentimes comes confusion. And when we have confusion, oftentimes it's followed by anger and is then followed by finger pointing. And then communication breaks down from there. What I will say is that on the district's behalf, we are working feverishly to not only improve our communications uh with the general public. But we do have a lot of work that needs to happen to improve our communications with our buildings, and I know that Dr. Jones and his team are are committed to that. But I did wanna acknowledge, as Dr. Jones has done earlier in this meeting. The great amount of fear and confusion that these multiple variants and the moving target of addressing them. Has presented to our communities, and and that is no small thing. And so the commitment that I wanna give to anyone who might be listening, but especially our educators. Is that we we can do more and we are working to do more in terms of improving how we communicate. What is the plan? And what can these predictable systems look like as some schools will pivot in and out? Of remote learning and in-person instruction. So I say all that to say this. These are unprecedented times, and we've said that from this dais. Uh, in innumerable amount of instances and occasions. But I am very confident that like everything else, we will come out on the other end of this better. And more whole by this experience together. I cannot remember a time that we have been in closer communication with SEA leadership. I cannot remember a time when we have been in closer communication with our legislators who are working in Olympia right now. And even though through all of this confusion and all of this fear, and for some specific communities, is it's hard to see the results of that work. As a system, we are moving in a direction that is going to leave us better than when we began. And so as we as we continue to fight back these multiple variants and this moving target. What I just wanna offer is that we as a board, as you've heard from so many of my colleagues hosting several various community sessions, are here and ready to collaborate. We are not going to get every instance right. We are not going to be able to respond to every single call for action that is laid in front of us. But we are here and we are willing to give it our best shot. And we are in a prepared position to do the collaboration necessary to help instill the sense of security. For families and educators, but most importantly, our children, as we are trying to work through these incredibly difficult times. So I wanna stand here as the leader of this board and say, I apologize for any lack of communication. Or any poor communication that may have transpired, especially as we have begun to figure out how to mitigate for the impacts of Omicron. And offer a commitment that while it might not feel like it for every single person out in our community, we are trying and will continue to do better on your behalf. On the behalf of your children, right? So with that, I wanna just offer that you're here, we see you, we love you. We know that this is difficult and we are not in your shoes. We are not going into classrooms every single day. For me personally, it's breaking my heart that I'm not in my classroom right now. And the experiences of our educators are very different than the experiences of our administrators, of board directors. Of folks who feel as though we are at the top of this system. And I wanna acknowledge that there is so much more that we have to learn and understand. About what the day-to-day experience is of people who are walking into those classrooms, whether they be educators or students are. And with that knowledge, with those open lines of communication. I hope that we can build that understanding, and with good understanding comes good policy and practice. So please continue to reach out to us. I know that personally, I spent the majority of my weekend on the phone. With various educators in leadership and specific buildings, and I know that that's true for all of the other directors on this call. But it's gotta go beyond, and we're recognizing the fact that it's gotta go beyond conversations, and it has to end up in action. And I am incredibly confident in Dr. Jones's team that we are going to get there, right? So please, continue to hold us accountable, continue to communicate with us. And if we're not getting it right, let us know. A lot of folks already are, all in our emails. And um as we continue to try and be as responsive as we can. Just please know that we are, we are working tirelessly to to help alleviate what is a really trying and difficult. And life-threatening circumstance for so many families, so many educators, and so many folks who are out there in our community. So with that being said. It is six twenty-one. There being no further business to come before the board. The regular board meeting is now adjourned at six twenty-one PM. Please continue to wash your hands, socially distance, be safe. Because your life and the life of your children matter greatly to us. In fact, it's the most and most single important thing that is on our minds right now. So have a wonderful evening, stay safe, and we will see you soon.
Get back, Stan. Thank you.
Absolutely. Thank you for that. Take care.
Good night, all.